Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Maloney and Moore's Parade and Montecarveron. The acronym is AMPAC and the Chief Judge of Consular Court. Today is Class 131, Class 131. What did we learn in Class 130? Well, you must keep in mind, even though we took a deeper dive in the reading over the case of France versus United States of America of 1952, but what should the Moores really understand about why I presented that? You see, it's not so much about the case. It's about the fact that we're studying, what, the International Court of Justice? Right? That must be the proper concept and context of Class 130, right? It's how do you utilize the organ commonly known as the International Court of Justice? Right? How could the Moores get a backup, right? Once the Moores start to issue their rulings through Consular Court as Moores, and if our Consular Court orders don't prevail, then what should we do next? Well, we have to now utilize what the procedures of the United Nations Charter, right? So we started studying over, what, Chapter 14 that talks about the International Court of Justice, right, bringing your contentious dispute to the Court. And this is what the Moores have to understand. Ever since 1945, and especially after 1946, once the statutes of the International Court of Justice was established, the International Court of Justice immediately started to rule over cases. So ever since 1946, the Moores have always had an opportunity to take their contentious dispute to the International Court of Justice. But what was the problem? Well, the problem the entire time is the Moores were still what? Stable, right? Because after 1945, contemporary international law stated under Article 73 of the Charter, Article 73, Section E as an echo. If you read it, it talks about a constitution made required, right? So if Article 73 is about decolonization of a non-self-governing territory or a trust territory, meaning where Moores have been colonized, and you look at Article 73, Section E as an echo, and it starts talking about a constitution, then what should they have told the Moores? The Moores need a constitution. The Moores need to declare their own independence. They need to start checking the boxes regarding the reforms of international law. This is what the Moores should have been doing ever since 1945, at the very least, right? Understanding that all the African states also utilize the same reforms, right? So what we take away from Class 130, first of all, is that it's all about the International Court of Justice as a backup plan for the Moores because we're going to need help from the United Nations. We're going to need help from their organs, which is the Security Council, the General Assembly. We're going to need help from their special committees such as the C24, right, the Commission 24, that assists with non-self-governing territories, right? And ultimately, we're going to need help from the International Court of Justice. That way, they can deliver a ruling based upon our Morse treaties, right? It'd be more likely the Empire Morocco versus the United States of America, right? That would most likely be the name of the case, right? And what do you think the rest of the headline might say? The rights of nationals, Moroccan nationals, in the Empire Morocco. You see, the right of Moroccan nationals in the Empire Morocco. That's more than likely what the case is going to be cited as, you know, something similar to that, right? But therein lies the second part of the problem. When we started understanding Class 130, and I understand it was a pretty lengthy class, three hours and 34 minutes, but it was important for the Moores to understand that the International Court of Justice is utilizing treaties to try to come up with an understanding as to what are the rights and privileges of both the United States of America and what are the rights and privileges of Moores, you see? So therefore, what we take away from Class 130 is that the ICJ ultimately had to give the United States of America a limited temporary Consular jurisdiction over Moores, right? But what does Consular mean? That means Consular Court. Now, don't get me wrong. Are the United States of America using their domestic courts to subjugate Moores, right, under their civil and criminal jurisdiction? Yes, they're doing that against Moores, but why? Because Moores are saying they're what? Negro, black, colored, African-American, Moorish-American, Indian, right? Hebrew, Israelite, everything but what? Moroccan. So since everybody keeps saying they're Americans, that means the Moores, who keep saying they're the true Americans, end up in a true American court. So it's American versus American dispute. That's called local, domestic. The reality is the Moores should have been calling their nationality as Moroccan. That way, they can invoke Moroccan law. But the only way the Moores could do that is they had to return to Morocco and follow the prescriptions of the treaties they returned to Morocco. What about the Morocco? About Moroccan government, right, the empire itself, right? And establish the government again. Seeing that Mohammed V stepped down and France stepped down after 1956, the Empire Morocco has been void of a central government. So the obligation of Moores, at the very least, since 1956, is to sit in the seat of Sultan and start to sit in the Udi Passebit's jurisdictions all throughout the Empire Morocco. And what is the Udi Passebit's jurisdiction? Well, that's what's called territorial jurisdiction. Every territory where the colonists is claiming a constitution, every territory where the colonists claim an unincorporated territory such as islands, these are what you call territorial jurisdictions that the Moores have to take over with our own constitutions, right? It's an overlay over top of the United States Constitution. They got a constitution of the state of Alabama, no worries. Here comes the Moorish constitution as an overlay over top of the state of Alabama's constitution. At the same time, that Moorish constitution that's an overlay over Alabama is also a constitution as an overlay over the United States of America and the United States. The Moorish constitution reigns supreme. Why? Because the Moorish constitutions for Moroccans in Morocco, that is the name of these states. That's the parent state. That's the external sovereign independent state was commonly known as the Empire of Morocco. So what do we take away from Class 130 in terms of, as an overview? Well, the United States of America still has civil and criminal jurisdiction over all Moores until they follow the instructions of the treaties and pledge their allegiance through application to a Moroccan state government. Until then, the ICJ said the Moores have consented and acquiesced to stay under the jurisdiction of the Wizard of Oz. And that's the truth. And that's what the Moores have to take away from. We have delayed our own justice. And we need to take some ownership of that. We need to admit that openly to say that we could have got our rights back since 1906 when the Act of Al-Dosseris was fully ratified. Act of Al-Dosseris automatically gave the Moores back their own sovereign Moorish governments to oversee the Empire Morocco. So ever since 1906, we've always had an opportunity to return to Morocco. I'm talking about the state of Morocco, not some dang-on temple. I'm talking the state. So you have to understand that we've had plenty of chances as Moores to come home just like Dorothy. But what was the problem? We need to understand the instructions. See, Dorothy, towards the end of the movie, the Good Witch still had to give her instructions. She still didn't know how to get home to someone, right? What a higher authority had to tell her, "Well, Dorothy, all you have to do is say what? There's no place like home, and click your heel three times." And when she did that, she closed her eyes, and when she opened her eyes, she was right back in Kansas, just like that, right? So what happened? The Good Witch gave Dorothy specific instructions. She had to follow procedure. What does the three clicks of the heel mean? Three presses of a gun, you see? So what has happened with the Moores? We haven't been following the instructions very well. Well, why is that? Because our leaders didn't tell us the instructions. Our leaders been telling us to enforce the constitution. Wrong answer, wrong concept, miseducation that kept us in the jurisdiction of Oz with the Wizard. You think the Wizard going to tell you how to come home? No. Think about the movie of Dorothy. Did the Wizard ever tell Dorothy how to get home? And the answer is no. Dorothy had to get specific instructions from the Good Witch. You can look at the Good Witch of that movie and say, "That's the United Nations." Trying to help indigenous people to get back into their own jurisdiction to go back home with a pen. And this is what's happening. The United Nations is helping us to understand how to enforce international law. They're the referees. So the Good Witch in the movie with Dorothy came in almost like an intermediary between Dorothy and the Wizard. But always remember, the Wizard never did tell Dorothy how to get back home. Dorothy had to believe in herself and follow the instructions. And when she did that, she found herself back home. And this is what the Moores have to understand. We have to follow instructions, and we have to return back to the jurisdiction of the Empire Morocco and get out of the jurisdiction of the United States. And the only way to do that is by what? Consent and application. It's about the pen, Moores. Or the pen will put an end to colonialism. How do you put an end to colonialism? It's called what? Decolonization. But how do you decolonize? It's because of the applications. You got documentary evidence that says you declared your independence. You got documentary evidence that says you have a constitution that's been ratified and deposited registered with the United Nations in accordance with Article 1 or 2 of the Charter. You have documentary evidence with the pen that says you recognize the Charter's provisions, 111 articles. You have documentary evidence that shows that you not only renounced the jurisdiction of the United States and no longer a citizen, but you also did what? You pledged your allegiance to the Moroccan state. That's called documentary evidence. That's how you decolonize. That's how you change jurisdiction. It's with a pen. Everything's with a pen and paper. It's just that easy. It's pen and paper. Following instructions, procedure. It's all we have to do. But unfortunately, we were following the wrong leaders. But now we know what to do, right? We're going to move forward, right? We're going to uplift fallen humanity in a very competent way. So all the thing I can say about that is long live the empire. Let's get into the class. All right. So, um, as you know, I always open up the Constitution. Constitution is paramount. The Constitution means what? That means you're no longer what? consenting and acquiescing to the United States' limited Consular jurisdiction. You're no longer consenting and acquiescing to come under their civil and criminal jurisdiction as adopted Americans. It's about the pen, Moores. You let the document speak for you. It's not about your verbal decree. It's about what you can prove, the documentary evidence. That's what's all about. Without the Constitution, you're still in the jurisdiction of the United States. And that's the same thing the ICJ told the United States. You can hold on these Moores, right, just so long until they finally pledge their allegiance back to their own state through a constitution, et cetera, right? Let's take it to the board. What we've been talking about, okay? We're talking about the Charter of the United Nations, right? Chapter 14, Articles 92 through 96. It's about what? The International Court of Justice, right? That's what we're talking about. How to utilize the ICJ to our advantage, right? Right now, we're going over the case of France versus United States of America. It's cited as the rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco of the year 1952, right? So we learned in Class 130, it was about what? The Court, right? The ICJ Court awarded the United States a limited Consular jurisdiction in Morocco. But the jurisdiction was over who? The Moores. Well, what do you call that in law? That's called what? Personal jurisdiction, right? So the ICJ awarded the United States of America and the United States in the several Union States with what? A personal jurisdiction over the Moores. But the ICJ did not award the United States of America with territorial jurisdiction. Meaning, the United States of America don't have jurisdiction over the Empire Morocco, but they have jurisdiction over the Moores directly. It's two separate types of jurisdiction. Territorial jurisdiction with the Empire Morocco, and then you have personal jurisdiction which is over the Moores directly. So therefore, they were awarded, right, a limited jurisdiction over Moores directly, you see? But what type of Moores? Well, it would have been Moroccans who didn't have their government yet. So since the United States of America turned around and said, "Well, there's no more Moores. It's all former Moores." All the Moores are what? Americanized. So therefore, the United States of America said, "Well, we really don't need Consular Court. All we need is the civil and criminal jurisdiction of our Supreme Court and inferior courts of the United States of America, the United States and the several Charter Union States because all we got is a bunch of Americans over here." Because the Moores had to follow the instructions of Article 73 of the Charter of the United Nations. Think about it. If the case came out in 1952, but the Charter came out in 1945, seven years later, this judgment comes out. So the United States and France knew they're on Article 73 of the Charter. The Moores have an obligation to what? To no longer be governed. Article 73 of the Charter said what? The Moores have to self-govern. So since the Moores weren't following the instructions of the Charter of the United Nations, right? Chapter 11, right? Chapter 11, Charter of the United Nations, Article 73 and 74. If the Moores weren't following the instructions between the years of 1945 and 1952, seven years, the United States knew that they could have a right to oversee the Moores because the Moores have a right to enforce the Charter over the past seven years, from 1945 to 1952. You gotta see what's happening here. So the ICJ is looking at the case from 1950 to 1952, and they know all about the Articles of the Charter. And they said, "Not only these Moores aren't enforcing their own treaties, they haven't even enforced the Charter." They had, the Moores hadn't even enforced their own universal Declaration of Human Rights of 1948. So from 1948 to 1952, the judgment came out, four years, the Moores hadn't even invoked their rights, human rights, by calling themselves what? Moroccans in Morocco. So don't sit up here and try to blame the ICJ, say, "Man, the ICJ, man, looked out for the United States." No, that's not true. If you read the case, it said at a point in the case that they had to take an academic look at the case versus a practical look at the case. I'll say it again. They had to use an academic approach versus a practical approach. What does practical mean? That's in a strict sense, to look at the law as is. They had to use a what? An academic approach. What does academic mean? They had to use a little common sense, a little bit of politics to really get the proper interpretation. Why? Well, number one, because the Moores had been using the Charter since 1945, Article 73. The Moores had been using Universal Declaration of Human Rights of 1945 to get their, 1948, excuse me, to get their rights, human rights. And the Moores, whether they're at the case from 1950 to 1952, to say, "Hey, we reject France." So the ICJ is looking at this French Protectorate treaty called the Treaty of Fairs of 1912, and France is acting as a dual agent representing both sides of the contract. The ICJ had never seen anything like that before. So the ICJ had to use what's called an academic approach versus a practical approach. If they had just looked there in a strict sense, well, that confused them because France is playing both sides of the equation. So they had to use some common sense, a little bit of politics to figure out, I know it's called opinion unitis. Opinion unitis, opinion juris. O-P-I-N-I-O. Second word, juris, J-U-R-I-S. Opinion juris. That means that the judges had to turn around and use academic approach to say, "Okay, well, we gotta let the United States hold on to jurisdiction over these Moores because the Moores have waived their rights temporarily." Even though the treaties never gave the United States of America a right to sit in Consular Court, it never gave the United States of America a right to have put the Moores in a status where the Moores could not invoke their own rights. But since the Moores have waived their own rights under acquiescence, International Court of Justice had to turn around under an academic decision, opinion unitis decision, to allow the United States a temporary stay over the Moores. That must be understood. So the ICJ was really struggling with this case. They're looking at the Charter. Moores ain't using the Charter. They're looking at the Human Rights Declaration. Moores ain't using that of 1948. Now, they're looking at French Protectorate, which is the Treaty of Fairs of 1912. The Sultan had messed up and let France represent both sides of the contract. This was a hot mess. It's a mishmash. So at the very least, the ICJ said, "Man, look, United States, y'all lucky today. This is an unavoidable consequence. But when these Moores wake up and they enforce their rights through their full powers, then all these effects of law are going to be binding against the United States authorities and against the United States nationals." That's what we got to take away from Class 130. All right, let's get to the class. All right, so the Moores know we're going over the Charter of the United Nations, right, about the International Court of Justice, right? We're going over the case of France versus United States of America, right? Here's the case, um, from the top, Brother Drake.
International Court of Justice, Reports of Judgments, Advisory Opinions, and Orders. Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. France versus the United States of America, Judgment of August 27, 1952.
All right, so let's go on down, more or less pick up where we left off, okay? All right. So we left off on page 201 of the judgment, right? So the International Court of Justice gave a ruling that told the United States, "You know, all your legal arguments are not valid. They're not supported whatsoever. However, we understand that since you still have your names on the treaties, someone has to enforce the treaties." And one of the parties to the treaty have waived their rights tacitly, tacitly, under acquiescence because they didn't show up to defend themselves. And France did a horrible job of representing the Empire Morocco. They didn't wake up the Moores like they were supposed to. We'll talk about that today. So as a quick recap, okay? Go through this relatively quickly. We're going to pick it up, the last couple of chapters, and then we're finishing up, and the Court was ruling on this to say that the United States, they did not have a right of Consular jurisdiction over the Moores, all right? And we'll figure out why was that, right? So, Brother Drake, from the top.
During this period, France and the United States were in negotiation with regard to a number of questions, including the renunciation of capitulatory rights. There are isolated expressions to be found in the diplomatic correspondence which, if considered without regard to their context, might be regarded as acknowledgements of the United States' claims to exercise Consular jurisdiction and other capitulatory rights. On the other hand, the Court cannot ignore the general tenor of the correspondence, which indicates that at all times, France and the United States were looking for a solution based upon mutual agreement and that neither party intended to concede its legal position. In these circumstances, the situation in which the United States continued after 1937 to exercise Consular jurisdiction over all criminal and civil cases in which United States nationals were defendants is one that must be regarded as, in the nature of a provisional situation, acquiesced in by the Moroccan authorities. Accordingly, it is necessary to conclude that apart from the special rights under Articles 20 and 21 of the Treaty of 1836 and those which arise from the provisions of the Act of Al-Dosseris to which reference has been made above, the United States' claim to exercise and enjoy as a right Consular jurisdiction and other capitulatory rights in the French zone came to an end with the termination of all rights and privileges of a capitulatory character in the French zone of the Sharifian Empire by Great Britain in pursuance of the provisions of the Convention of 1937.
All right, so right here, the ICJ is telling the United States straight up, "The United States, all your claims have come to an end." You see that? They could not support any of their legal arguments. Came to an end. They could not hold any jurisdiction over the Moores, right? So if it came to an end and the United States did not have jurisdiction over the Moores as a right, they ended up with what instead? A privilege. Or what type of privilege? Limited privilege. But why did that happen? Okay, the ICJ tells you right there. Because what? The acquiescence of what? Morocco. The Moroccan authorities, look at it. Moroccan authorities. The Moroccan authorities acquiesced. See that? Who the Moroccan authorities? That's the government, Moroccan government. Well, who was overseeing the Moroccan government at that time of 1952? More specifically, from 1906, Act of Al-Dosseris, the time that was signed, until 1952, at the time of the judgment. Well, it was France, right? Let's take a quick look at it. So the ICJ said, "The Moroccan authorities failed," right? Let's take a look at it. So we got the treaty, right? Treaty of Fairs of 1912. And right here in the preamble, it says that France was establishing a government to oversee the Empire Morocco, right? So the Moroccan authorities was France, and it's supposed to be the Moorish government. I.e. the Moxen, right? The Moxen is the Moorish government, right? So right here in the preamble, let's go ahead and read it. This is what the ICJ is looking at, saying, "France failed to protect the Moores. France failed to wake up the Moores and put the Moores in Consular Court. France failed to allow the Moores to be the sovereign authority over the Empire Morocco because France didn't want the Moores governing over France," you see? So from again in the preamble, Treaty of Fairs of 1912, this is where it all started going wrong for the Empire Morocco regarding Moores. Okay, all right, Brother Drake.
Signed at Fairs on March 30, 1912. The government of the French Republic and the government of His Sharifian Majesty, Zairus, of inaugurating a regular regime in Morocco based upon internal order and general security, which will make it possible to introduce reforms and to ensure that economic development of the country have agreed upon the following.
So France was charged the affairs to inauguration, right? To establish what? A regular regime in Morocco. What does regime mean? Government, right? That's the obligation. So you come down here, Article 1 says what, from the top?
Article 1. The government of the French Republic and His Majesty, the Sultan, have agreed to establish in Morocco a new regime compromising the administrative, judicial, educational, economic, financial, and military reforms which the French government may see fit to introduce within the Moroccan territory.
So the French government was supposed to do what? Introduce, right? Introduce what? A new regime, new government. So they're supposed to be the Moroccan authorities, right? To assist the Moroccan authorities as the French government to deal with what? Administrative, judicial, see that? Judicial, that's Consular Court, right? Deal with education, economics, financial, and military reforms. This is what France is supposed to do. What they're supposed to do with who? Right here, this paragraph.
It shall include the organization of a reformed Sharifian Moxen.
You see that? So the France had an obligation through a treaty to help reform the Moxen, the Moorish government. They failed to do it. You see? That's Article 1. They failed in Article 1. But the Treaty of Fairs of 1912 was based off of what? The Act of Al-Dosseris of 1906. They're only five years apart. So instead of waking up the Moor, they let France get the pen. And even then, in the Treaty of Fairs, France was supposed to still wake up the Moores so the Moores could be what? The government, the Moxen. Right, so you go to the treaty, right, of the Act of Al-Dosseris, you type in the word Moorish, right? Right? So you go to the treaty, right, of the Act of Al-Dosers, you type in the word Moors, right, Control F. You find everywhere it says Moors, right? Let's, let's go down. So everywhere it says Moors, right here in Article two, right? It's about what? The Moxen, which is the Moors government, right? The Moors government and the Sultan, right? And it's about the sovereign authority of the Sultan and the Moxen of the Moors government. That's the authority. Let's go back to the case before I continue on with this, this treaty. Proper concept, context. The ICJ said what? That the Moroccan, the Moroccan authorities act here. So who's Moroccan authorities? France and the Moors government, you see? So let's go back to the Act of Al-Dosers. So right here, in the treaty, it's talking about the Moors government, Moxen. Let's go down, right? Who's the, the ICJ said, there was obligations for who? See right here, authorities. So the ICJ said, there was a problem with the Moroccan authorities. So in this particular article, which article is this? This is Article four, okay? Article four talks about who? The Moors authorities. The ICJ said, who failed? Said the Moroccan authorities. Who's the Moroccans? The Moors. You see what the ICJ is saying? The Moroccan authorities. So France is acting as what? A power attorney, i.e. de facto Sultan on behalf of what? The Moroccan authorities. They were also passing what? Moroccan laws. Remember, ICJ said in Class one thirty, that the ICJ, that France was passing Moroccan laws on behalf of the Empire Morocco, right? As a power attorney, so to speak. So right there says, Moors authorities were supposed to be in charge, nineteen oh six. The ICJ pointed this out in nineteen fifty-two. Okay, you go down, let's go down to the next article. Okay. The Moors Minister of War. That's a title of someone in the government. That's called what? Moroccan authority, isn't it? You got authority if you're the Moors Minister of War, right? What article is that? Article fifteen. You see that? Let's go down to the next section. What's the ICJ pointing out? Okay, since right here, talking about the authorities, the Moors government, right? That's the authority. What article is that? That's Article eighteen, okay? Talking about Moors authority. That's, that's your authority. Let's go to another one. Article twenty-five, talking about what? The Moors Customs Authorities. ICJ is blaming this on the Moroccan authorities who acquiesced. Who's the Moroccan authorities? The Moors. Acquiesced, right? We agreed to let the United States of America have jurisdiction over us because in nineteen fifty, nineteen fifty-two, the Moors run around saying they what? Negro, black, color, African-American, Moors-American, Indian, Hebrew Israelite, right? Baptist, Jehovah Witness, you name it. Everything but what? Moroccan. That way you can be the Moors authority. You see? Keep in mind, Moors means what? Moroccan. Okay, let's prove that. Let's go over here in French. See that right there? Moroccan, right there, Moroccan, Moroccan, right, Moroccan authority. Moroccan authority, that's in French, right? Moroccan authority. Let's come back over here. Moors means Moroccan authority. This is what the ICJ is pointing out. Let's go down to a couple more. I'm, I'm just proving my point here. Article twenty-seven, talks about what? The Moors government, right? The Sharifian Empire, these were the authorities. This is the ICJ pointing out, the Moors dropped the ball. Right here, Article twenty-nine, the Moors Customs Authorities, this is ICJ pointing out. Where was the Moors in nineteen fifty-two? Where were they? They was hiding in their temples. That's where they were, right? Talking about the Moxen, it's the Moors Empire. So if it's the Moors Empire, Article thirty-two. If it's the Moors Empire, that means the Moors are responsible for the empire, which makes them what? The Moroccan authorities. You see what's happening here? So Article thirty-two, let's go down. Right here, it says, the Moors government. Article thirty-three, it's all over this treaty, you see? Once again, the Moors government, I'm going down. The Moors government, again, that was Article thirty-four, Moors government, Moors government. Okay. We'll stop right there. Talking about the Moors government was the authorities. Where was the Moors government from nineteen fifty to nineteen fifty-two? ICJ is looking around, saying, "Where are the Moors? I don't see no Fairs." France got French judges sitting in the consul court. ICJ threw that out. No, we dismiss that. We don't accept that contention. Y'all know better than France. France, you had an obligation according to not only the Act of Al-Dosers of nineteen oh six, because France is responsible for helping the Moors. Then France took on a direct obligation in a bilateral treaty with the Sultan to help the Moors, Article one. That was nineteen twelve. Now you fast forward to nineteen fifty, nineteen fifty-two, and ICJ is looking around, saying, "Uh, I'm reading these treaties, France, uh, you were supposed to help put together a new regime, new government for the Moors" and according to these treaties. We can't blame the United States. The United States didn't have an obligation to wake up the Moors. It was France's obligation. Who else's obligation was it to wake up? The Moors themselves. We gotta take some accountability for the fact we didn't wake up. We didn't do it. No Madrali came to us and said, "We're descendants of Moroccans." We turned around and said, "We're the real Americans." The foolishness. Then it got even worse. The Moors started saying, "We're the true Americans." Then they said their powers, right, their autonomous political powers come through a temple. They comparing the temple to the Vatican. This is sad. The foolishness. Gotta understand what's happening here. We've delayed our own justice as a people. We did this to ourselves. The United States wasn't gonna turn around and help us. Did the wizard help Dorothy get home? Yes or no? When you look up the word wizard in Merriam-Webster's dictionary, and you look down, it says the wizard what? Chiefly British. Look it up. Look up the word wizard, it says chiefly British. So they were playing games with the Moors. They laughed at the Moors. Said these Moors are stuck in Oz. They don't know how to get home. All they have to do is click their heels three times and go home. What does three clicks mean? Three brands to go. The United States is laughing at the Moors. Okay, let's continue. Okay. So since the Moors acquiesced, the United States can maintain a limited jurisdiction over the Moors, right? So remember last class, I said, we're gonna start reading over this next subsection where the United States, uh, they had their submissions talking about Moroccan laws that are applicable to them, right? We're gonna get to that in just a second, but what I wanna tell y'all is, look how the ICJ first talked about consul court, then next thing you know, they'll talk about Moroccan law, right? Because it's about the laws. You got, they talked about treaties first, then they start talking about Moroccan law. We'll get to this in just a moment, but before we do, we have to talk about the summary of what the ICJ came up with. Okay, what do I have up here? The Moors should be familiar with this by now. This is called the summary page, right? The summary. On the summary page of the judgment, case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco nineteen fifty-two is the summary. We're gonna go over three of the rulings from the judge, right, from the ICJ. Right, so this is the preamble, preamble right here, but we're only gonna read this first sentence, we're only gonna drop down to three and four, okay? Right there, Brother Dre.
The extent of the consul jurisdiction which the United States may exercise in the French zone of Morocco.
Read it again.
The extent of the consul jurisdiction which the United States may exercise in the French zone of Morocco.
So right there, the ICJ said, the United States can maintain what? A consul jurisdiction, right? They said it may. The United States may exercise it. Moors keep saying the United States don't have jurisdiction over them. Yes, they do. The ICJ said, they award the United States with a limited jurisdiction over the Moors. You see what's happening? Okay, drop it down now to Section two, three, and four, okay? Section two.
Section two unanimously, with regard to consul jurisdiction in the French zone of Morocco, the United States is entitled to exercise such jurisdiction in accordance with the terms of its treaty with Morocco of September sixteenth, eighteen thirty-six. That is to say, in all disputes, civil or criminal, between citizens or proteges of the United States.
You see that? So right there, the ICJ said, the United States could maintain civil or criminal jurisdiction over who? Proteges. Who are the proteges? Moors. You see? So they're making a distinction between citizens or between proteges, right? So citizens versus Moroccans. Moroccans versus Americans. You see that? And what's the problem? These proteges think they're all Americans. That's the problem. So therefore, there's no versus, there's no between, it's just American versus American. There's no diversity of jurisdiction. There's no diversity. There, there's nothing distinct between the two parties. If, if there's no diversity of what? Nationality. Then there's no need for consul court. Consul court is between who? Moroccans and Americans, or Americans versus Moroccans. But according to this protege word, that's code for saying all the Moors are now what? Americans. You see? But yet, the ICJ said, but, the United States, since y'all got y'all names on the treaty, you have to establish a venue for consul court. Just in case these Moors are doing what? Invoking the treaties and say, "Look, we, we wanna use consul court. I'm a Moor. Where's the consul court?" That's the Moors have a right to consul court because of the treaties. Why? Because the Moors are what? Moors subjects. Article one oh two of the, of the Act of Al-Dosers talks about what? Having consul jurisdiction over who? Moors subjects and foreigners. So it's between foreigners and Moors subjects. So the United States had a limited jurisdiction to put together a venue so that Moors subjects could petition consul court. I.e. Drez Scott. Drez Scott should have had a consul court that he could petition. You see what's happening? So the ICJ awarded the United States with a jurisdiction over citizens and Moors who call themselves Americans. You see that? Section three.
Section three, by ten votes to one, it is also entitled to exercise consul jurisdiction in all cases, civil or criminal, brought against citizens or proteges of the United States to the extent required by the provisions of the Act of Al-Dosers relating to consul jurisdiction.
So the United States invoking the treaty piece of French of eighteen thirty-six? They're invoking the Act of Al-Dosers of nineteen oh six. They're using your Moors treaties to have civil and criminal jurisdiction over you. And you don't even know it. See what's happening? But then the ICJ turns around and said, "But," there's a however clause, right? Okay, let's read it. Section four.
Section four, by six votes to five, but the other submissions of the United States relating to consul jurisdiction are rejected. It is not entitled to exercise consul jurisdiction in other cases in the French zone of Morocco. Its rights in this connection, which were acquired solely by the effect of the Most Paved Nation Clause, came to an end with the termination by Great Britain of all its rights and privileges of a capitulatory character by the Franco-British Convention of nineteen thirty-seven.
Alright, so right here, section four. But the other submissions of the United States relating to consul jurisdiction are rejected. What were they trying to say? They, they were trying to say what? They had an absolute right to keep the Moors naturalized. But the, but what? The Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty. Article fifteen, paragraph one, secured what? A fixed and uniform basis to allow the Moors to return back to Morocco. And once the Moors returned back to Morocco, they have a right to do what? Oversee the Moroccan government. They could be the Moroccan authorities again. So therefore, the United States could not just keep the Moors one hundred percent naturalized permanently. No, it was limited. That's it. You see? Alright, now we're gonna read this section five in just a moment. Let's go back to the case. Go back to the case. Alright, so what we gonna do? We gonna pick it up in this next subsection, right? Keep in mind, on page two oh one of the judgment. Okay, let's get into this next subsection where this contentious dispute about the United States is saying, uh, Moroccan law is not applicable to Americans, right? So they were trying to say that the, that the Moors have to get the permission of the United States to enforce Moroccan laws against Americans, right? In other words, they're trying to say that the American law was supreme and not Moroccan law. But keep it in mind, the United States of America located where? In Morocco. So the law of the land is supreme. The law of the land, even the United States' own Constitution of eighteen seventy-one, right, the United States, Federal Corporation, Article six, clause two, says what? Treaty Supreme Law of the Land. The treaties recognized the Empire Morocco as being the state. The treaties recognized the Moors government as having sovereign authority. So therefore, the United States right now is fighting to say, "Okay, I know we signed these treaties, but is Moroccan law applicable towards us as well? We know the treaty is applicable, but what about Moroccan law? Well, what is Moroccan law? Well, that's anything that the Moroccan authorities put together, call, calling on as legislation. I'll say it again. When the Moors write their own legislation, it turns into, is coming on as law. Is Moroccan legislation applicable to Americans? Is it binding on Americans? That's the question they're asking. Alright, so the United States is fighting to say, "No." If that's the question, is Moroccan law binding against Americans, the answer is no. This is the United States is saying. France says, "Yes." The ICJ turn around and said what? "Yes." Why? Because you're where, United States of America? In Morocco. You're not in America. America's in Morocco. Morocco's not in America. You understand what I'm saying? The title tells you everything right here. Right? So the United States knew this, but they were just challenging it. They just throwing anything at the walls, he was sticks. Right? Okay. Alright, from the top, Brother Dre.
Uh, the court will now consider the claim that the United States nationals are not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws unless they have first received the assent of the United States government.
Alright, so right here, just in the title alone. The court, right, the ICJ court, will now consider the claim, right, that the United States nationals are not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws. Pause right there. You must make a distinction between Moroccan treaties and Moroccan laws. Treaties are seen to, are, are seen to be on like an international level. Treaties are like international. But now the United States is saying, well, domestically, do these Moors get the right laws? That Americans come under the jurisdiction of Moroccan laws domestically as well? Right? Two jurisdictions, international and national, right? That's what we're talking about. And on a national level, you're talking domestic, local, right? So this is what they're talking about, two diff- different jurisdictions, international law, which is consul court, and consul laws of the consul court, because consul court has its own laws. And then domestically, do the Moors government have a right to enact legislation? Can they write bills, ratify the bill, and then turn that bill into legislation that's applicable towards Americans? I'm being redundant for a reason. You gotta understand the difference between these two different laws. One is treaty law, the other is Moroccan law. Treaty law is international. Moroccan law is domestic, alright? So they said, "Hey, we, is domestic Moroccan law binding against Americans?" This is the question, right? So from the top again, the court will now consider the claim that the United States nationals are not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws unless they have first received the assent of the United States government. What does assent mean? Prior permission. Right? Prior permission. Okay. So let's, let's see what France said, right? Here's France. The French submission, right, from the top, Brother Dre.
The French submission is, this regard reads as follows. That the government of the United States of America is not entitled to claim that the application of all laws and regulations to its nationals in Morocco requires its express consent.
Pause. So France is saying, "We, France don't need to get your permission to put together Moroccan laws applicable against Americans." Remember, this is France talking. But this is the ICJ doing a recap, right? This is the judge is saying this out loud based upon France's submission. But France is saying, Moroccan law is binding against Americans. Moroccan law is binding against Canadians. Moroccan law is binding against the British. Moroccan law is binding against all European states. But especially the United States of America, right? Because these are the two what? Disputing parties, France versus the United States of America, two parties, right? So now they narrate it down and say, "Yes, Moroccan law is applicable against..." So now they narrate that and say, yes, Moroccan law is applicable against United States of America. But guess what? Moroccan law is also applicable against who? France. You see why the ICJ was looking at this like, wait a minute, timeout. France is writing laws to govern over the empire Morocco, which means it's governed over the United States of America, but are those same Moroccan laws applicable and binding against France? Well, the answer is yes, but France is acting like a dual agent, you see? You think they gonna turn around and enforce those laws against themselves? I don't think so. You see? You gotta understand what's happening here. ICJ was having, they were struggling with this, right? Okay, let's get back to point. Okay, so from the top, your brother Dre.
That the government of the United States of America is not entitled to claim that the application of all laws and regulations to its nationals in Morocco requires its express consent.
All right. So it's talking about laws. Look, laws, all laws, and regulations. You see that? So you got what? Moroccan laws. Then you might have what? Regulations. You know how the United States say, oh, we got statutes, right? Codes and ordinances. You see? So regulations fall under what? Codes, ordinances. You see? You gotta understand what's happening. You got Moroccan laws and regulations. That's how you regulate, right? Such as, we supposed to hand out what? Permits, right? The Moors government's supposed to hand out permits to all the foreigners in Morocco regarding what? Arms of war and arms of sport. So a permit falls under what? Regulations. That's a permit, you see? But that regulation backed up by what? A Moroccan law. So laws created, then the permit creates the regulation. Cause you're regulating the law. You see how that works? You gotta catch what's happening here. So first, we read about what? It was about the treaties in class one thirty, about treaty law. Now, today, class one thirty-one, we're learning about what? Moroccan laws and regulations. You see? Different type of laws. Okay? So the United States saying, uh, well, uh, you know, shall I say, France is saying, the United States, you don't have a right to say Moroccan laws are not binding on you. So they gotta use legal arguments, right? To support their case. All right, let's continue.
That the nationals of the United States of America in Morocco are subject to the laws and regulations enforced in the Sharifian Empire, and in particular, the regulation of December thirtieth, nineteen forty-eight, on imports, on imports not involving an allocation of currency without the prior consent of the United States government.
All right. So France is saying, we don't need your prior consent, right? That's, that's, uh, assent, right? A-S-S-E-N-T. In other words, matters simply just consent. We don't need your prior assent. We don't need your prior assent, you see? But look at this. Look what France is doing. France said, uh, you know what, the United States of America? The nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. You see what France is doing? France keeps, France keeps letting the whole world know that the United States of America is in Morocco. You see that? What else did France do? France says also, not only the United States of America in Morocco, but it's also what? In the Sharifian, right? It's in the Sharifian Empire. You see? So they, cause they call Morocco the empire. They call the empire Morocco. So they using both words, empire Morocco, cause they know when they wrote the treaties, they was using the words almost singularly. They say in Morocco sometimes. Sometimes they say empire. So France is bundling, saying empire and they say Morocco. You see what they're doing? They're making sure they're very clear and being precise in their legal argument. You see that? All right. So this is France, okay? France saying, yep, these, these laws are binding. Okay, here comes the United States. Keep in mind, this is the ICJ saying this out loud. They're reading this out loud. So the ICJ is recapping. You gotta understand this, okay? From the top, your brother.
The United States submission, in this regard, reads as follows. Four, under the regime of extraterritorial jurisdiction now exercised by the United States in Morocco, the United States citizens are not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws.
Pause. Read it again.
Four, under the regime of extraterritorial jurisdiction now exercised by the United States in Morocco, the United States citizens are not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws.
So the United States argument, right? But wait, timeout. Up here, France calling what? The United States of America in Morocco. Then when it's time the United States to talk, the United States turn around and says, uh, and it's section four, of the regime of extraterritorial jurisdiction now exercised by the United States in Morocco. You see that? They don't say the United States of America. Right? Why? Because they're operating on the Constitution of the United States of eighteen seventy-one instead of operating under the Constitution of the United States of America of seventeen eighty-nine. You see? So right here again, the United States in Morocco. Well, I'm glad the United States is admitting they're in Morocco as well. Cause the United States of America is in Morocco. And the United States. The United States is in Morocco. You see that? That's what all the columnists out there, all your trolls, they keep saying that the United States is not in Morocco. Even the United States and the International Court of Justice are stating publicly through a world court that the United States is in Morocco. This is the United States legal argument. This is what the United States put on the record. You understand what I'm saying here? So don't let the United States fool you that this is in Morocco, cause they're saying it with their own words and the ICJ is doing what? Repeating the legal arguments that the United States put in writing. That must be understood. Don't ever think for a minute that the United States and the United States of America is not in Morocco. So let me say this to the fools out there that keep saying they're Americans. How you gonna sit there and say you're indigenous, Aboriginal, American, when the United States themselves is saying they're in Morocco? The land is Morocco, which makes you Moroccan if you're indigenous, Aboriginal, and octantist? What's the problem with the word indigenous, Aboriginal, and octantist? What's the problem with those words? You know what those old words are in the eight parts of speech? Adjectives. Aboriginal is adjective. Indigenous is adjective. Octantist is adjective. What does adjective mean? It's describing who? The real national. Who's in, what's the nationality of the person that's, that's Aboriginal? That's the question. What's the nationality of the person that's indigenous? That's the question. What's the nationality of the person that's claiming to be octantist? That's the question. When I tell you the answer, the ICJ tells you right here, the United States said, Morocco, Moroccan. Right? Moroccan. Moroccan. So, let me pause right here. I'm talking to the Moors American teachers right now. The Moors American teachers, at the very least, tell the students, just stop saying, I'm indigenous. Indigenous is a generic word. It's an adjective. It, it's only describing someone. Who's it describing? What's the nationality? Moors American teachers, please tell your students, stop, stop saying that what? Uh, uh, I'm Aboriginal. Aboriginal is an adjective. It's describing who? You keep leaving out the who. I'm Aboriginal. There's a blank. You supposed to say, I'm an Aboriginal what? Moroccan. I'm an indigenous what? Moroccan. I'm an octantist what? Moroccan. But you're running around saying, yeah, I'm Aboriginal. What the hell does that mean? This, this, this is sad when I think about what we've done as Moors for decades, run around here tomorrow, yeah, I'm Aboriginals. What the hell does that mean? You, you gotta understand why I'm pausing right here. Why am I pausing? Because we're displaying our ignorance as a people when we say, yeah, I'm Aboriginal. You know, the world looks at you and say, uh, you don't realize that's an adjective. That's not a noun, sir. A noun is a nationality. People are named after the land, and the land is named after the people. Show me a land, man, it's called indigenous. No state called indigenous. Show me a land, man, it's called Aboriginal. There's no state called Aboriginal. There's no state called octantist. You gotta understand, we've had our ignorance on display for years. We ain't ever been taught properly. Never. It's like saying native. Native what? Gotta understand what's happening. The foolishness that we've been taught as a people. You must finish the sentence. I'm an Aboriginal, then state the nationality. And it ain't Moors American, cause Moors American is an adjective. Yeah, I'm an Aboriginal, Moors American, so you're an adjective, adjective. I'm an indigenous, Moors American, so you're an adjective, adjective. I'm an octantist, Moors American, so you're an adjective, adjective. What are you ever gonna call out the dang on now? This is sad. From the top, your brother. Get back to point. Start at the top, very top, the United States.
The United States submission, in this regard, reads as follows. Four, under the regime of extraterritorial jurisdiction now exercised by the United States in Morocco, the United States citizens are not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws. Such laws become applicable to the United States citizens only if they are submitted to the prior assent of the United States government, and if this government agrees to make them applicable to its citizens. The Dayer of December thirtieth, nineteen forty-eight, not having been submitted to the prior assent of the United States government, cannot be made applicable to the United States citizens. Claim that Moroccan laws are not binding on the United States nationals unless assented to by the government of, of the United States is linked with the regime of capitulations, and it will not be necessary to repeat the considerations which have been, all, which have already been discussed in dealing with counsel jurisdiction.
All right. So from the top, this is the ICJ talking, this is the judge is talking. Right? So keep in mind, the United States is claiming what? What are they admitting right here, Moors? They're admitting right here that the United States is exercising, right? They're exercising, right? Extraterritorial jurisdiction. They said what? Now, they're now exercising extraterritorial jurisdiction. You see that? Extra jurisdiction. Why would they need to practice extra jurisdiction if they thought they already had jurisdiction? Why do they need something extra? You know why it's extra? Because the United States of America is located where? In Morocco. It's two separate jurisdictions. It's American jurisdiction and Moroccan jurisdiction. So when they want extra jurisdiction, that means they're reaching their hands into the jurisdiction of Morocco, cause all the Moors are still Moroccans by pluck, by blood pedigree. But they got jurisdiction over Moors, like it was called personal jurisdiction. So in the personal jurisdiction, the Moors are in the personal jurisdiction, so the United States of America is exercising extraterritorial jurisdiction over the territory of Morocco to pull Moors back into the jurisdiction of the United States. Two separate jurisdictions. And they're saying right here, they're admitting, now exercising extra, extra territorial jurisdiction in Morocco. Right? So the United States, the United States is exercising extraterritorial jurisdiction in Morocco. You see that? They're admitting it. This was nineteen fifty-two. You see? So if the Moors were Americans, America would be saying this. They know the Moors are what? Moroccans. That's what makes it extra. You see? So continuing, now, right here, at the bottom, last sentence. The claim that Moroccan laws are not binding on the United States nationals unless, uh, prior sent to, right? Prior consented to by the government of the United States is linked with the regime of capitulations, and it will not be necessary to repeat the considerations which have already been discussed in dealing with counsel jurisdiction. Why is the ICJ talking like that? Why, why they saying, we don't, we don't need to talk about this again about counsel jurisdiction? Why not? Because in the above stated paragraph in class one thirty, the International Court of Justice already told the United States, you don't have a right to counsel jurisdiction. The only reason why I'm gonna give you a limited jurisdiction, because the Moors have done what? Consent in an act, yes, but you don't have a right. You just got a privilege. But when these Moors wake up, you even lose your privileges, you see? So right here, the United States, well, we're practicing extraterritorial jurisdiction cause the Moors have act, yes. And the ICJ said, well, we get that, but you saying the capitulation, the Moors have capitulated to your jurisdiction, and that's what's linked, right? It's a link. That's a key word in international law. Linked. Linked. Linked, right? Linked with the regime of capitulations. But the ICJ already kicked that out, saying, no, no other foreign state in the empire Morocco gets to practice capitulation. Only thing Europeans can do now is just say, these Moors are just sleep. That's it. They're consenting to the jurisdiction of the foreigners. The Moors are consenting to being colonized. That's what they're saying. So the ICJ already kicked that out. They said, we don't need to talk about that in here. We rejected that. Remember that? ICJ rejected it. Okay. Let's continue right here.
There is no provision in any of the treaties which have been under consideration in this case conferring upon the United States any such right.
Pause. So what right? What are they talking about? Okay. There is no provision in any of the treaties which have been under consideration in this case confirming or conferring upon the United States any such right. Right? What right? The so-called right of assent. You see that? The United States don't have a right to say that the Moors gotta give the United States express permission in writing. Right? So the Moors gonna come to the United States, say, uh, uh, we drafted a bill, uh, and us Moors, we, we passed it into law, a, 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 and now we're gonna hand it to you, United States. Can you review it and see if you wanna abide by it, please? Right? That was, that's called assent or consent. We don't need their consent. Why? Because the United States of America is in Morocco. You don't need their permission. You see? This is what the United States are saying. But why was they saying that? It's because they subjugated the Moors. They turned the Moors into what? Americans. They ain't Moroccans no more. But the United States said, even when these so-called Moors wake up, do we have to abide by Moroccan law for real, for real? The ICJ is like, uh, yes. Why? A, because you signed the treaties. B, because you're in Morocco. And C, because these Moors are the indigenous people of the land. But what type of indigenous people? Moroccans. Moroccan is the nationality. That's the noun. Moroccan. Moor, M-O-O-R, is the noun. You see? Not the word, just indigenous or native. Aboriginal, can't just use those as standalone words as an identity. You might as well be calling yourself black. I'm talking to the Moors Americans right now. Stop calling yourself indigenous. You might as well say you're black. Black is an adjective. Aboriginal is an adjective. Aboriginal is an adjective. Indigenous is an ad- adjective. You gotta stop saying this, saying the nationality, and the nationality isn't Moorish American, because Moorish American is an adjective. You can't be two adjectives. People gonna make you like you crazy. Yeah, man, see, I'm Aboriginal Baptist. Yeah, man, see, I, I'm Aboriginal, uh, Jehovah Witness. Yeah, I'm an Aboriginal Mormon. I'm an Aboriginal Scientology. I'm an Aboriginal Jewish. Th- this is what I'm saying. These are religious statuses. Moorish Americans are religious status, it's through a temple. Go back and look at anything about Moors from conception, they've been saying this about the what? Religious corporation. They keep trying to say, no, it's, 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 it's what? Civic. I don't care what you say, go back and look at the documentary evidence since nineteen thirteen until twenty twenty-four, all the Moorish Americans, documentations, documentary evidence that's on the record with the several union states keeps saying what? That the Moorish American is a religious corporation. Stop trying to fight it to say, no, it's a civic organization. No, it isn't. No more establishing through a temple. Two temples. Old Canaanite Temple and Moorish American Temple. So if the pastor gonna establish a church called a Baptist Church, then you gonna turn around and say, nah, man, see, the Baptist Church is really political. Baptist is a nationality. We, you gotta understand it. Yeah, it's a religious divine and national Baptist. Yeah, we divine and national Jehovah Witness. Yeah, we divine and national movement of Scientology. You gotta stop doing this to ourselves. If the Moorish American to prove that it's a civic organization, they would already proved it by now. This is why everybody on planet Earth keeps telling Moorish Americans that everything you said is a belief. Why do they say that? Go look at Resolution seventy-five of nineteen thirty-three. Former Moors are now what? Operating through an independency of a what? Religious corporation. It's a religious independence. Go look at all these letters that the Moorish Americans love to talk about what? Yeah, man, uh, the mayor of Chicago wrote a letter for the Moors. All these, all these mayors wrote certifications recognizing who? The Moorish American holy week. This is what Moors been standing on. Yeah, man, go back and look at the mayor, he recognized us. Yeah, he recognized you as what? A religious corporation. It's a holy week. This is, this is sad. We can't read. It says holy week. That's a religious corporation. It's a church. I'm pausing here for a reason. Why? Because we're talking about Moroccan laws. The United States said Moroccan laws ain't applicable to them. But guess what? The United States ain't have to worry about no Moroccan laws, because the Moors kept calling themselves Americans. This is sad.
From the top, brother.
There is no provision in any of the treaties which have been under consideration in this case conferring upon the United States any such right. The so-called right of assent is merely a corollary of a system of Consular Jurisdiction. The Consular Court supplied their own law, and they were not bound in any way by Moroccan law or Moroccan legislation. Before a Consular Court could give effect to a Moroccan law, it was necessary for the foreign power concerned to provide for its adoption as a law binding on the consul in his judicial capacity. It was the usual practice to do this by embodying it either in the legislation of the foreign state or in ministerial or Consular decrees of that state issued in pursuance of delegated powers. The foreign state could have this done, or it could refuse to provide for the enforcement of the law. There was a right of assent only to the extent that the intervention of the Consular Court was necessary to secure the effective enforcement of a Moroccan law as against the foreign nationals.
Alright, so, so right here in this particular argument, uh, the United States is trying to say, well, only really the Consular Court did the Consular Court law, right? The laws of the court is when the United States said Moroccan laws are binding against them, only through the court. Because all courts have their own law, right? They got their own statutes, their own rules of court. But the United States saying domestically, all the Moors gotta get the United States permission in order to enforce Moroccan domestic laws against them. You gotta catch what's happening, okay? Now watch this.
In the absence of any treaty provisions dealing with this matter, it has been contended that a right of assent can be based on custom, usage, or practice. It is unnecessary to repeat the reasons which have been given for rejecting custom, usage, and practice as a basis for extended Consular Jurisdiction in which are largely applicable to the right of assent.
Pause. So right there, the ICJ is telling the United States, you're losing on this legal argument again. Because the United States is saying Moroccan laws are only applicable to the United States as long as the United States first gives permission. But the United States said, well, why would we have to give permission? Well, we're already practicing extraterritorial jurisdiction. These Moors don't have jurisdiction to even talk about Moroccan law. You see what's happening? The United States, well, why are we even talking about Moroccan law? Because these Moors are all Americans now. They ain't Moroccans. However, if these Moors start talking about Moroccan law, well, they gotta get our permission first. You see what's happening? But yet, the United States have put their names on all these treaties already consenting and acquiescing to the Moroccan treaties. And within the Moroccan treaties, they're talking about Moroccan law and regulations. The word regulations is in the Moroccan treaties that the United States already signed. But you see, they just throwing stuff up against the wall to see what's thick. You see, they had nothing to lose. You gotta understand, the United States going into this case, they had nothing to lose. Right? But they wanted to see what the World Court was saying about this case. Right? Okay. From the top.
In the absence of any treaty provisions dealing with this matter, it has been contended that a right of assent can be based on custom, usage, or practice. It is unnecessary to repeat the reasons which have been given for rejecting custom, usage, and practice as a basis for Consul, um, for extended Consular Jurisdiction in which are largely applicable to the right of assent.
Pause. So therefore, the right of assent, right? Has already been rejected by the ICJ because they said it's connected to the custom, usage, and practice of the United States exercising extraterritorial jurisdiction, because they thought the Moors came under the, the treaty right of the United States. The United States thought they had a right to keep the Moors naturalized. So therefore, the ICJ is already saying in this case, right here in this subsection, well, you know that prior legal argument you had? Well, we already dismissed that. So since that's linked, right? What you're saying about prior permission, that's linked back to what we already rejected. So your legal argument about if Moroccan law applicable to you, yes, it is, because we already rejected, right? The fact that you don't have a right to hold these Moors as Americans forever. When these Moors wake up, and they start to adhere to their treaty rights, they can enforce Moroccan law and Moroccan treaties and Moroccan regulation. You see what's happening? So you gotta understand why the ICJ is rejecting this off the top, saying, this is already rejected, right? We is already rejected. See the word rejected? That's a powerful word for ICJ. Rejected. So the United States is already losing, and we're barely getting started with the reading of this. They're already losing, you see? So how is the, if it's being rejected already, how is the, let's talk about the year twenty twenty-four. How is it the Moors are still being, coming under the criminal and civil jurisdiction of the United States? It's called acquiescence, isn't it? We delayed our own justice, because we don't know our nationality. So you gotta catch. The ICJ already rejected the United States in nineteen fifty-two, while the Moors know this. Okay, let's continue.
It is, however, necessary to point out that the very large number of instances in which Moroccan laws were referred to the United States authorities can readily be explained as a convenient way of ensuring their incorporation in ministerial decrees binding upon the Consular Courts. And that way, and that way only could these laws be made enforceable as against the United States nationals so long as the extended Consular Jurisdiction was being exercised.
Alright, so what's happening here? So the ICJ said, you know, a lot of people been trying to enforce Moroccan laws against the United States. Why is the United States hasn't been abiding by Moroccan laws? Because the Moors wasn't sitting in the Consular Court. ICJ said, in order to enforce treaties and Moroccan laws and Moroccan regulations, the only way to secure that, to have a guarantee, is through the Consular Court. The Consular Court supposed to have who sitting in the chairs? Moors. But there was no Moors sitting in the chairs. See how the ICJ is exfol- exposing something here? It's called a illuminating secret. You need Moors in order to enforce Consular Court against the United States America, right? So take it from the top. In the absence, right? In the absence of any treaty provisions dealing with this matter, it has been contended that a right of assent can be based on custom, usage, or practice. It is unnecessary to repeat the reasons which have been given for rejecting custom, usage, and practice as a basis for extended Consular Jurisdiction in which are largely applicable to the right of assent. It is, however, necessary to point out that the very large number of instances in which Moroccan law were referred to the United States authorities can readily be explained as a convenient way of ensuring their incorporation in ministerial decrees. What's ministerial decrees? Ruling from the court. Binding upon the Consular Court. So the ICJ said, the only way to ensure, to ensure, to ensure the incorporation, to ensure the incorporation of Moroccan laws is binding, is binding, is binding upon the Consular Courts. So guess what? The United States was getting away with all that mayhem, all because the Moors wasn't sitting in Consular Court. But the ICJ said, the only way for the world to cure itself of the United States is for Consular Court to have rulings over the United States to enforce both the Moroccan treaties and Moroccan law, both of them. So the United States was fighting to keep the Moors subjugated as Americans, because these Moors have a right to become Moroccans again. Now the Moroccans consented what? To Consular Court. See, the whole world knows just because of this case alone, who has the sovereign, independent jurisdiction over the United States America and over the United States and over the several union states of the United States America. ICJ has known this for a long time. The world knows this. They waiting on the Moors to wake up. Consular Courts. The Moors run around here faking it, talking about they got Consular Court. You ain't got no Consular Court. You haven't even followed the instructions of the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one, to consent back to a Moroccan state government. Not your own self-appointed. Moors run around talking about, yeah, man, see, I'm the Consular General, and I'm the Consular Court, and I'm the legislator. You wearing all the hats of government. The foolishness. This is ridiculous. We gotta stop doing this. Alright? Let, let's finish this last sentence. Get back to point. So the ICJ says what? In that way, right? In what way? Once it's binding upon the Consular Court to issue a ruling, in that way, and in that way only, could these Moroccan laws be made enforceable as against the United States nationals so long as the extended Consular Court jurisdiction was being exercised. You see that? How can Consular Court ever have jurisdiction if the Moors don't have no constitutions? If you don't have a constitution, can't set up a state. If you don't have a state, you can't establish Consular Court. Without the state, there's no Consular Court. But you can't establish a constitution, because you don't even know your dang own nationality. You gonna say your nationality is an adjective? Can't do it. So this whole time, since nineteen fifty-two, they've been waiting on the Moors to enforce laws against the United States. The United States gonna do whatever they can to stop the Moors from doing what? Having their declaration independence, writing their constitutions, and trying to enforce Moroccan laws and Moroccan treaties against the United States, because they already know what the ICJ said in nineteen fifty-two. They said, it's over, buddy. It's over. Soon as these Moors wake up and stop acquiescing, it's over. And how can the Moors enforce their rights? Consular Court. Now let's pause right there. Once the Moors enforce their rights through Consular Court, guess what? The ICJ is already expecting the Moors to show up at the ICJ, right? At the ICJ, the International Court of Justice. Why? Because they already know the United States, they gonna act right. They know the United States gonna be a bad actor. They know the United States gonna be doing something regarding, uh, 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 use of force, right? Acts of aggression, threats and breaches against Moroccan laws, Moroccan treaties, and against international law. The ICJ is waiting on the Moors. This is what we gotta understand. We got backup right there. That's why they going through this. It's the Charter. And through the Charter, we talking about chapter fourteen of the ICJ has already made a ruling against the United States, and when these Moors wake up and they enforce their rights through Consular Court, it's binding. And if you don't adhere to the Consular Court order, these Moors got a right through the Charter, Article ninety-four, to bring that dispute to the United Nations Security Council, General Assembly, Special Committees, even potentially even the ICC, International Criminal. You gotta see what's happening. But the Moors have to check the boxes first, right? Alright, let's get into the details. Now the ICJ is gonna break down, uh, uh, three problems, right? Problems and solutions. They gonna break it down. Okay, from the top, uh, 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 note.
The problem arises in three ways which must be considered separately. The first is in cases where the application of a Moroccan law to United States nationals would be contrary to the treaty rights of the United States. In such cases, the application of a Moroccan laws, whether directly or indirectly to these nationals, unless assented to by the United States, would be contrary to international law. And the dispute which might arise therefrom would have to be dealt with accordingly to the ordinary methods for the settlement of the international dispute. These considerations apply to the decree of December thirtieth of nineteen forty-eight, which the court has found to be contrary to treaty rights of the United States.
Alright, so from the top. It says, the problem arises in three ways. The ICJ talking. The problem arises in three ways which must be considered separately. The first is in cases where the application of Moroccan law to the United States nationals will be contrary to the treaty rights of the United States. You see that right there? So if the Moors enact Moroccan laws, domestic Moroccan laws, they pass a bill into law, they turn around and say, it's applicable against the Americans. If that Moroccan law violates the treaties of the United States, then that Moroccan law becomes what? No, it won't. It's not binding against the United States nationals if you, if the Moroccans, the Moors pass laws that violate the treaties of the Americans. In other words, if Maroc- Moors enact a Moroccan law that violates Moroccan law, which is the treaty itself. If we do something, let's say, to pass a law that violates the human rights of the Americans, then the Americans don't have to abide by that Moroccan law that the Moors run. It's a violation of the treaties, or it's a violation of international law. Then we have to get the express permission from the United States in that moment if they're gonna abide by it. But as long as we write laws, pass bills, enter law, that are within the bounds of the treaties and within the bounds of international law, the United States is, is, all those laws will be binding against the United States. You gotta understand what's happening. So the ICJ is trying to tell the United States, okay, when these Moors wake up, here's the deal. They gotta pass laws that fit within the parameters of the treaties, that's A. And B, these Moors, when they wake up, they gotta write Moroccan domestic laws that works within the boundaries of what? International law as well. You see? This is why they talking about international law, right? Right here says, would be, right? If we, if we wrote laws, if we wrote Moroccan laws, Moroccan laws, that would be contrary to international law. You see that? The United States would have a legal argument not to have to adhere to the Moors' domestic Moroccan laws. You gotta catch what I'm saying. So we can't do nothing to violate the treaties, and we can't do nothing to violate international law. All of our laws must be, be, be only up and up. Can't violate international law or treaties. I'm being redundant for a reason. As the Moors start to write laws, y'all start thinking about how y'all can get some revenge and some get back on the United States America. It ain't gonna happen. The United States America got treaty rights. Think about that for a second. The United States America's got treaty rights, Moorish treaty rights, and they got international law backing them up as well. The Moors got what? Moroccan laws and Moroccan treaty rights, and they got international law backing them up as well. So both parties are protected by the treaties and international law. That's what we gotta understand. Let's continue. Alright, second, right?
The second way in which the problem arises is in cases in which the cooperation of the Consular Courts is required in order to enforce the Moroccan legislation. In such cases, regardless of whether the application of the legislation would contravene treaty rights, the assent of the United States would be essential to its enforcement by the Consular Courts.
Pause. Okay. From the top. The second way, right? The second way, the ICJ is talking. The second way in which the problem arises is in cases in which the cooperation of Consular Courts is required. And now, Consular Court gotta get involved, because there's this dispute between Americans and Moroccans, right? So now, the cooperation of Consular Court is required in order to enforce the Moroccan legislation. You see that? Who enforces Moroccan legislation? Consular Court. You see? It continues to read, in such cases, regardless of whether the application of legislation will contravene treaty rights, the assent of the United States would be essential to its enforcement by the Consular Courts. You see? Let's read again from the top. The second way in which the problem arises is in cases in which the cooperation of the Consular Courts is required in order to enforce Moroccan legislation. In such cases, regardless of whether the application of the legislation will contravene treaty rights, the assent of the United States would be essential to its enforcement by the Consular Courts. You see that? So Consular Court has to enforce Moroccan laws. But if, if the Consular Court, uh, uh, sets forth a ruling that violates the, the United States' rights, the United States still has a right to do what? To try to appeal it or take it to who? The ICJ. You see? So you gonna find out, the United States only has two choices. Accept the ruling from Consular Court or turn around and, uh, try to appeal it or take it to the ICJ and say, the Consular Court, uh, submitted a ruling that the United States America rejects. You see? Alright, let's go on to the third way.
The third way in which the problem arises is in cases where the application to United States nationals otherwise than by enforcement through the Consular Courts of Moroccan laws which do not violate any treaty rights of the United States is in question. In such cases, the assent of the United States authorities is not required.
Alright, so the third way, the third way in which the problem arises is in cases where the applications to the United States nationals otherwise than by enforcement through the counsel courts of Moroccan laws which do not violate any treaty rights of the United States is in question. In such cases, the assent of the United States authorities is not required, so guess what? As long as we are abiding by the treaties and our Moroccan laws is not infringed against the United States' rights, then the question, right? The question of us making our laws applicable against them can't be questioned. Right here, this last sentence says, in such cases, the assent, right, the prior permission of the United States authorities is not required, you see that? It's not required for us to get their permission to enforce Moroccan laws. We don't need to get permission to take them to counsel court either, you see what's happening? So if the United States has a problem, they gotta take that dispute to the ICJ, just like with us. Early on during decolonization, we gonna have problems with the United States. Guess what we gotta take our dispute to next, the ICJ. But later down the road, let's say five years from now, ten years from now, when the United States has a problem with our counsel court orders, now they're gonna have to take us, Moroccans, to the ICJ, you see it's gonna flip. Because the United States know they about to come, they, they, they about to come under the rulership of Moors, you see? So they gonna be taking us to the ICJ as well, Moors gotta prepare themselves for that, right? We'll, we'll be the respondent, the United States of America will be the claimant, you see? They'll be the plaintiff, we'll be the defendant, so to speak, right? So check out this last sentence.
Accordingly, and subject to the foregoing qualifications, the court holds that the United States is not entitled to claim that the application of laws and regulations to its nationals in the French zone requires assent.
Alright, okay, now Moors, you gotta understand this word, French zone means empire Morocco, right? The Moorish empire, that's what French zone means, right? Okay, so uh from the top again.
Accordingly, and subject to the foregoing qualifications, the court holds that the United States is not entitled to claim that the application of laws and regulation to its nationals in the French zone requires its assent.
Alright, so this is very powerful, this is the ICJ's ending this, right? Now at the end, it's the ruling, it says accordingly, and subject to the foregoing qualifications, right? She's word foregoing, right, qualifications, the court holds that the United States is not entitled to claim that the application of Moroccan laws and Moroccan regulations to its American nationals in the Moorish empire requires its prior permission, you see that? So we don't have to get the United States prior permission to do anything. What, what, what's a, what's a law, what, what, okay, talking about what, regulations, right? Laws and regulations, what's a regulation? Such as the Moors, right, filling out an application, right, to do what, renounce the citizenship of the United States, that's a regulation, right, it's a form, right, it's a form we're filling out. What's another form, when you plant your allegiance back to Moroccan state, that's also falling to what, another what, regulation. So we're abiding by laws, which is the treaty law, treaty of Madrid, right, eighteen eighty, article fifteen, paragraph one, that's treaty law. Then the Moors established other additional Moroccan laws and regulations such as the forms. Those forms are protected under what, Moroccan laws, you see? So, so what happens right here, right? So right here, the United States is not entitled to claim that we need to get their permission. Right, so that's the end of the reading for this particular subsection, okay? Alright, so what, but what's happening, alright, let, let's go a little deeper. Let's go a little deeper, what's happening? We're talking jurisdiction, the United States is fighting over what, jurisdiction? They want jurisdiction over the Moors. So when the Moors wake up, we got a right to what? To, to have entitlement of jurisdiction over the United States of America and over the United States and over the several Union States and over all the American nationals. So the Moors end up with called territorial jurisdiction and personal jurisdiction. The Moors end up with territorial jurisdiction because we are the rulers of their empire Morocco. And we'll have personal jurisdiction over who, Americans, you see what's happening? This is why the United States is fighting, to keep the Moors subjecting, they don't want Americans to come under Moorish rule, you see? So what's happening up here, what do I have up here, okay? This, this is a little, little bit of the insight of what's happening, right? Once we start to enforce our rights through Moroccan laws and the treaties and regulations, here's what's happening, okay? So at the top, this is about the empire Morocco. Over here to the left, this is about our Moor states. And over here to the right, it's about the United States of America, the United States and the several Union States, okay? So, so three different parties, okay, empire Morocco, that's one party. Second party is the Moor state governments. Third party is over here to the right, that's about the United States of America, the United States and the several Union States, okay? So from the top, alright, note.
The empire Morocco is the sovereign independent state. The head of state is the office of His Majesty the Sultan. The Sultan rules over the Moxen and all foreign states in Morocco.
Pause, okay. So the parent state, right, the parent, in red, the parent state, the external parent state, the original jurisdiction, the original state, right, is the empire, the empire Morocco, is the sovereign independent state, right? The head of that state, of the empire, is the office of His Majesty the Sultan. The Sultan rules over the Moxen, which is the Moorish government, and the Sultan rules over all foreign states in Morocco, you see that? So what's a foreign state in Morocco, okay, right here, the United States of America is a foreign state in Morocco, you see that? The Sultan would have jurisdiction over the United States of America, right? Because that's the original state, the sovereign independent state is Morocco, but it's an empire, right? Okay, over here to the left, says geographical superior jurisdiction. Now we're talking about local Moor states such as Ampac as an example. Right, so you have the empire, that's B state, then the empire recognizes all our individual Udi Passidah's territories, right, such as Ampac as an example. So Ampac also has superior jurisdiction over all what, states? Because all these states in, in the empire Morocco, so the Moors supposed to be the sovereign authority over the United States of America, you see? Okay, so over here.
Geographical superior jurisdiction. Ampac Moor state government has the Udi Passidah's territorial jurisdiction and personal jurisdiction on behalf of the empire state. The receiving state of Ampac has subject matter jurisdiction over the United States of America, the United States, the chartered state of Colorado and its local municipalities without prejudice to the original jurisdiction of the empire state of Morocco.
Alright, so what's happening here? The parties must be known. So the empire Morocco has the original jurisdiction and then it recognizes each of the Moorish governments in each of the territories under Udi Passidah's juris, right? So the Moors have territorial jurisdiction over each one of the territories such as over Alabama, Mississippi, et cetera, right? So in this example, I'm using Ampac, right, Alodion Moris Praetum Antae, Colorado, right? So it says, geographically speaking, right? Geographically speaking, Ampac has superior jurisdiction within our borders, right? But we're working off of the jurisdiction of the empire Morocco, they work hand in hand, you see? Alright, and what, what did we learn there, okay, go back to the Act of Obis师es of nineteen oh six, we, we gotta look at the reference point. Right? Okay, article two of the Act of Obis师es. It says, the police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan. It shall be recruited by the Moxen, the Moorish government, from the Moorish Mohammedis, commanded by the Moorish Kays and distributed in the eight ports open to commerce. So you got both the Sultan and the Moxen, which is the Moorish government, working together, that's article two, you see? So over here, on this example, you got what, the Sultan, right? You got the Sultan and the Moorish government working together, you see? So right here, in this paragraph, to the left. Geographically speaking, the superior jurisdiction is about in this example, Ampac Moor state government has the Udi Passidah's territorial jurisdiction amongst our borders and personal jurisdiction on behalf of the empire state, right? See this right here, on behalf of, let me, let me increase it, let me increase it. So Ampac Moor state government, right, derives its authority from who? The empire state, right, so on behalf of the empire state. So Ampac Moor state government derives its authority on behalf of the empire state, you see that? Because our constitution is recognized the empire, you see? Then it continues to read, the receiving state, who's the receiving state? Ampac, Ampac the Moor state, so it's the receiving state of Ampac has subject matter jurisdiction over the United States of America, the United States, the chartered state of Colorado and its local municipalities without prejudice to the original jurisdiction of the empire state of Morocco. What does that mean? What's this mean right here when it says, uh, without prejudice to the original jurisdiction of the empire state of Morocco? That means that Ampac, right, Ampac is recognizing the original jurisdiction of the empire of Morocco. So going back up, the empire Morocco, right, where the Sultan is, there will be a counsel court, right, for the empire Morocco, this is in red, there'll be a counsel court, a supreme counsel court, where all the Moorish judges will sit to oversee the entire empire Morocco. But locally, there'll be a handful of judges that oversee the territory, like Ampac's example, Ampac oversees Colorado, right? So the judges in this jurisdiction Ampac already understand that if the United States of America wants to appeal a counsel court order, the United States of America can appeal it to who, back up to the supreme counsel court of the empire. Because Ampac is just a small territory. But yet we have another supreme counsel court that oversees the entire empire, you see that? So in this last sentence, you gotta understand what's happening. So it says right here, without prejudice to the original jurisdiction of the empire state of Morocco. So Ampac is recognizing the original jurisdiction of the empire state of Morocco, you see? So it's two different jurisdictions, uh, local, right, domestic, right, domestic, right, domestic, and then you got what, international, you see that? National, right, national to the left, and then what, international, you see that? That's what's happening, right? Okay, to the right, what do we have to the right, okay? From the top.
Geographical inferior jurisdiction. The dependency sending state, known as the United States of America, the United States Federal Corporation, the chartered state of Colorado and its local municipalities come under the subject matter jurisdiction of the empire state. Ampac state government, Moroccan treaties, Moroccan laws, Moroccan regulations, competent counsel court laws and the customary norms of international law.
Alright, so that's, that's self-evident, right? So talking about the geographically speaking, inferior jurisdiction, now we're talking about inferior jurisdiction. To the left, we were talking about what?
Inferior.
Right, su- superior jurisdiction, right, geographically speaking, superior jurisdiction. Now we're talking geographically speaking inferior jurisdiction, right, so it reads, the dependency sending state, right, sending means the United States of America is here as a privilege status. They were sent from where, Great Britain. Now they have a privilege to stay here, right? So the dependency, because the United States of America depended to stay here, depending upon who? Who's the original state? The United States of America depended on who? The sovereign independent state of Morocco. So the United States of America is dependent upon the sovereign independent state of Morocco, you see that? Because Morocco is a state as well, but it's an empire state, you see? So right here from the top again. Geographical inferior jurisdiction, the dependency sending state, so who's the, who's the dependency sending state, would that be the United States of America, you see right here the case? The United States of America in Morocco, they're dependent upon Morocco, you see that? Alright, from the top, the dependency sending state, known as the United States of America, the United States Federal Corporation, the chartered state of Colorado and its local municipalities come under the subject matter jurisdiction of the empire state, Ampac state gov, Moroccan treaties, Moroccan laws, Moroccan regulations, competent counsel court laws and the customary norms of international law, you see that? Now why do we say that, okay, we just finished reading about what the United States said in the case, or should I say the ICJ? Right? Right here, in the third contention, right? Transfers United States of America nineteen fifty-two, right, page two oh three, right? One, two, second paragraph, page two oh three, second paragraph, about the third way, right? The third way in which the problem arises is in cases where the application to United States nationals otherwise than by enforcement through the counsel courts of Moroccan laws which do not violate any treaty rights of the United States is in question. In such cases, the assent of the United States authorities is not required, so not required to enforce our laws. So the last paragraph says, accordingly, and subject to the foregoing qualifications, the court holds that the United States is not entitled to claim that the application of laws and regulations to its nationals in the French zone requires its assent. So we're enforcing what, laws and regulations, against who? The United States, but it's also against who, the United States of America. But the United States, it comprises of what, fifty plus chartered territories, you see? So therefore, you go back to the illustration, over here, they're inferior, you see? They're inferior, this is the ICJ telling them, they're inferior because Moroccan laws are applicable to them, it's binding on them, right? So from the top, geographically speaking, inferior jurisdiction, who has the inferior jurisdiction? Well, it says it right here, the dependency sending state, known as the United States of America, the United States Federal Corporation, the chartered state of Colorado and its local municipalities come under the subject matter jurisdiction of the empire state, Ampac state gov, Moroccan treaties, Moroccan laws, Moroccan regulations, competent counsel court laws and the customary norms of international law, you see that? This is just based upon what the ICJ said in nineteen fifty-two, just that simple, you see? This is what Moors gotta take away from this, right? So the Moors wanna get a snapshot of that, that's fine. Alright, let's take a look at the summary, and we'll start wrapping it up to the next class. So we're going back to the summary, okay? And we start to close out, right, we talked about the summary, we just read over it. Now let's read over section five, what, what the ICJ told the United States of America in section five in nineteen fifty-two, the summary. Okay, from the top.
Five unanimously, the United States had contended that its nationals were not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws unless these laws have received the prior assent. There is however, no provisions in any of the treaties conferring upon the United States such a right. A right linked with the regime of capitulations which can only exist as a colary of counselor jurisdiction. So that if the cooperation of the United States counsel courts is required to enforce a law, see two and three above, the assent of the United States is essential. But subject to this, the contention of the United States is ill-founded. If the application of a law to citizens of the United States without its assent is contrary to international law, any dispute which may arise therefrom should be dealt with according to the ordinary methods for the settlement of international disputes.
Alright, so it's, it's two parts, it's right? So the beginning part tells you, okay, the United States, you don't have a right to say that the Moors gotta get your permission. But then the second part says, but if the Moors enact a law that violates your treaty rights or international law, then bring your dispute to the ICJ, right? So from the top, section five of this summary. The United States had contended that its nationals were not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws unless these laws have received its prior assent. There is however, no provision in any of the treaties conferring upon the United States such a right, you see how they reject it? A right linked, there's that word again, a, a right linked. "A right linked," there's that word again, "a right linked with the regime of capitulations which can only exist as a corollary of consular jurisdiction." So that if the cooperation of the United States consul courts is required to enforce a law, see two and three above. So therefore, when they say see two and three above, that means go back. If these Moors still sleep, the United States gets to enforce their civil and criminal jurisdiction. However, when these Moors wake up, then the Moors don't need to get the permission, the assent of the United States to enforce Moroccan treaties, Moroccan laws, and Moroccan regulations against the United States, you see? It continues to read. "The assent of the United States is essential," right? It's essential to do what? If the United States gotta operate the consul court. However, if the Moors wake up, it says, "But, but, but, subject to this, the contention of the United States is ill-founded," right? Meaning, when the Moors wake up, if the United States thinks for a hot minute that the Moors can't apply their laws against Americans and the United States authorities, meaning the federal government, the United States Moroccan laws are binding against the FBI. The United States laws are binding against the CIA. The United States laws are binding against police, sheriff, magistrate, prosecutors, counties, cities, charter states, the federal government, the whole nine, from A to Z. It's applicable against the United States president, the attorney general, secretary of state, all of their departments. Moroccan laws applicable against them, and we don't need their permission. If they don't wanna abide by Moroccan law, where do we take them? Consul court. It's binding on them through consul court. And by that way and that way only can we enforce Moroccan laws against them as well as Moroccan treaties and regulations, right? So right here it says, "But, subject to this," right? What's the "but" about? It's about if the Moors wake up. "Subject to this, the contention of the United States is ill-founded." So in other words, the United States can hold on to a limited jurisdiction, but when the Moors wake up, that limited jurisdiction goes away and the Moors get full powers and effect of their laws. Okay, then it's got this second part. It says, "If the application of a law to citizens of the United States without its assent is contrary to international law, any dispute which may arise therefrom should be dealt with according to the ordinary methods for the settlement of international disputes." What is that last sentence about? That's about the Charter of the United Nations, right? Article thirty-three that says, "You gotta bring your contentious disputes to the ICJ." So if the United States don't like Moroccan laws and they don't like the rulings from consul court, the only option they got left is to go where? To the ICJ. That's what the settlement, the method for the settlement of international disputes. That's Article thirty-three of the Charter. Talking about Pacific settlement of disputes, you see? So the ICJ has already told them, you're gonna either abide by these Moroccan laws or you bring your dispute to the ICJ. Those are your only options. You see what's happening? That's what the Moors gotta take away from this. Alright, so what's happening? What do the Moors need as I'm starting to close out? What do we need to get to this point? Well, we need a constitution. Right, that's the procedure. We got to follow the instructions, right? What else? We need a Declaration of Independence. The two go hand in hand. Got your constitution, Declaration of Independence, right? Check out this Declaration of Independence from Ampac as an example. No, from the top.
Declaration of Independence. "We, the Moors, we, the Moroccan nationals of Alodiam Morris Praetium Ante Colorado, hereby declare our independence from the United States of America. We declare that our modern Moroccan state and its authorized Moors government hereby reject the United States of America's colonial jurisdiction as being trustees or administrators in the Empire of Morocco. We, the Moors, shall no longer consent or acquiesce to the political or juridical de facto claims made by the United States District of Columbia or its chartered colonial states in the Empire of Morocco. Whereas, we declare our right to self-determination without the prior assent of the foreign United States international organization. Moreover, it is important to note that the term Moroccan, Moorish, or Moor shall mean the same. Also, the term Moroccan government or Moorish government shall mean the same."
Alright, pause. Now there's more to the reading, but we won't read all of it. I just hit some of the highlights real quick. So we've gone over in class one thirty. In class one thirty-one, we're talking about this what? This consent. This consent word, consent or acquiescence. That was about class one thirty, right? In class one thirty-one, we're learning about this word, "Assent," A-S-S-E-N-T. E-N-T, that's about what? Consent, you see? So in our Declaration of Independence, we're rejecting consent or acquiescence. We're not doing that anymore. We're rejecting what's called prior assent. We just learned about that. The ICJ kicked that out, right? So the Moors need a Declaration of Independence saying that we're no longer consenting and acquiescing to the limited jurisdiction of the United States. You see what's happening? But how do we follow that up? We have to follow up with our own constitution based upon our geographical territorial location within the Empire Morocco, right? So this is what the Moors gotta understand. We gotta understand administrative reforms. We gotta understand procedure. If we wanna decolonize, then we gotta do this with a pen, right? Because the pen will put them in to colonialism. I agree with that. Islam.
Islam.